All right, it's nine thirty a.m. on nineteenth day of April, which is a Friday. We'll bring a special session at Somerville County Commissioners Court to order. Let the record show Jeff Harris, Richard Talavera, Danny Chambers, Tammy Ray, and Wade Bush are all present. Item number one, discuss take action on granting a variance pertaining to Dana Allen's RV Park located at thirty fifty-five Highway sixty-seven Rainbow, Texas. And is this Ms. Allen right here?
Her, yes.
Oh, okay. I don't know y'all, and I never have met y'all. If you don't mind, why don't you come up to the microphone and make sure the little red light's on. And if you'll discuss your case, then we'll figure out where we're at. And nice to meet you, by the way.
Nice to meet you all. Thank you for having us. When we read through the RV, Somerville County RV Park rules, there was a rule that said that the hookups needed to be forty feet from any other hookup location. The way that the park lays out, we're asking for a variance to thirty-six foot wide, or thirty-six foot separation, so that we can run everything in a straight line.
Don't need you up there?
No, you go.
And the thing about this RV Park two is, is we're doing six-foot privacy fences all the way around it, so they're like cubicles almost. It's very private, so if somebody drives by, they're not going to see the trash and all that.
Is this a good depiction, ma'am, of what you have?
Yeah.
Because whatever they vote on...
It's rough.
Okay. But it's as accurate as it can be right now at this time?
Yeah, I've got a little bit better one than a sketch.
What we'll do, if you don't mind, is we'll put into the record whatever the court decides to do, and that way Michelle will have it on file. Ms. Reynolds, I apologize. Ms. Reynolds was there. Michelle. At least I got the name right today, you know? Sometimes I don't even do that. Buy a lottery ticket.
What rule is that?
Um, it's not numbered, but it is on page two. Required separation between recreational vehicles.
And it says what again? I'm sorry.
You want me to read the entire rule?
Just...
Just each of the hookup locations shall be no closer than forty feet from any other hookup location.
And you're looking at thirty-six feet wide, sixty feet deep?
Correct. Minimums, those are minimums.
And I'm probably getting into some of your businesses, so I should just stay out of. But I'm assuming that you've probably been in touch with the septic group, and you've been working with the county on getting that part clarified and laid out.
Yes.
So, nothing's standing in your way right now, except this thirty-six to forty feet?
Yes.
And you spoke to Texas Department as well?
Yeah.
Did you?
Yeah.
Perfect. Well, ladies and gentlemen, this is really up to y'all, whatever you think you'd like to do. She's got a very good depiction here of the roadways, twenty-foot, twenty-four-foot, the common area, the grassy area, the septic area. So, who wants to run with it?
I would like to make a motion that we grant a variance of the four foot, the difference of the four feet.
Make it thirty-six feet for this particular side instead of forty feet?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion by Tammy. Do I have a second?
Is this sufficient for us to file and count, or do they need to write up something asking for the variance? How's that work exactly?
Our attorney is supposed to be here this morning. He wasn't here, yeah, to give the variance.
I'm not opposed to it.
Right.
I want to just make sure we have everything we have to take action today. Does that make sense?
We can take this and file this with the record. Now, legal documents probably gonna... And here again, man, I don't mean to be hitting in your... You're probably gonna have an official, it looks like this probably is part of an official survey, I believe.
That's right, here's thirty-six, wow.
We've done this in the past, and what we did in the past is we took the rules, and we broke that paragraph down as a variance, and then underneath it, what you wanted to go to, and it was filed with this. That way, we understood what the variance was for. You just put the map, and it's gonna be hard to understand what exactly the variance is for. If there was something in writing that explained it, it would make it much easier to find later down the road.
Can I send that to you?
Yes.
That's what I'm asking. If we take action today, can she do this next week or whatever? So Michelle has that on file also.
And if you don't mind, Michelle, whenever she brings it in, if it were to pass today, if you'll just file it with these two documents, then it'd be good for open records if anybody ever goes after it.
Yes, sir.
Or you go with that, Ms. Allen?
Yes.
And just email me your request.
Okay.
I do have a question. I do see variances filed in the land records in the clerk's office. Is that something that would be required to be filed in the OPR?
That's a really good question for Wade or the attorney.
Well, if it's different than what... If it's different, if it's a variance from what our plans say, then it has to be filed with.
In the land records, not just part of the...
Well, I don't know about the land records or not, I would say it would...
I don't know if that's a question for the county attorney?
Yeah, I can't answer that.
Okay, so I do have a motion. I do not have a second as of yet. Also, I do have a second by Jeff. Do we have any further questions or comments at all?
Second, you're good? No, I'm on Rebecca.
Wade, honestly, I don't even know which RV park this is.
It's, you know...
I would like to amend my second as long as it goes with and follows with what they're required to do septic-wise, and I don't know why I wouldn't.
It's, you know, where Rainbow Village is, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong. It's right to the east of Rainbow Village, right there on Highway sixty-seven.
They have their cottages?
They have some, RVs, kind of on the corner by the golf course.
Oh, okay.
You know.
And y'all have already been out and talked to Kathy, right? And, or have y'all talked with her?
We have not.
I don't know anything about this.
So what you have to do is you file paperwork with Kathy and Rebecca to do your septic system.
Oh, okay.
And get approved, you get your permit to actually do your septic system. And of course, that'll have to be approved, even though if the court grants you a variance and something goes wrong with the septic system, then that's a whole nother issue.
Oh, right, yeah.
Yeah, take care of that.
That's between the county and the state on what they approve and disapprove. So even if they give you the variance, you know, you still have to go through with it.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Okay, I do have a motion, and I do have a second. Any further questions or comments or issues?
No.
All right, all in favor, said motion. That's five, four, zero against. Give that to Michelle. All right, ma'am, thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you. Be sure and go see Kathy and Rebecca.
All right, presentation to the court by James Bayless, owner of Brazos River Hideout Adventures RV Park. And you must be Mr. Bayless?
Yes, sir. How you doing? I'm doing great, how are y'all?
Good.
I only printed four, but I have just a little paperwork here. I have history, you don't need to...
Thank you, sir.
So, yes, just a little history on Brazos River Hideout. It was, are y'all ready?
Keep it, go ahead.
It was constructed in 2015. It used to be Brazos River Adventures. We're at the top of Cox Bend off of one ninety-nine in precinct three. And so I bought the property. It was originally nineteen acres. I bought it in 2021, and he had had the art, he had the infrastructure in, but he actually wasn't running the RV park when I bought it. Got it cleaned up, got it going July of 2022. And then subsequently purchased another seventeen acres to the north of it, adjoining the property in order to kind of expand the RV park once I got it up and running. And when I got it up and running, you know, I called, and from my understanding, the only real permits in place at the time were septic. As long as you got the septic right, that was all there was. And so, you know, kind of, and then kind of got going. We've been getting busier, finally getting our name out there. And so I went to want to get started on my project, and I found these rules, you know, the new rules that y'all adopted. And one of the rules states, well, first, one of the rules states, no RV parks in the hundred-year floodplain, which I'm pretty sure we are in the floodplain. It's flooded, just from talking to the previous owner, three times in the past ten years. And I think what they have to let out at Granbury is about forty thousand CFS, and it'll get, you know, knee-deep up there. And with, you know, plenty of warning to get everybody out. As far as, as far as I understand, I haven't been through enough rain to, or flow to get anywhere. But yeah, if we go to the second page, the subject area for the addition is gonna be in the yellow. And I'm looking at, you know, building another road to kind of minimize traffic by... I have a lodge on the property as well. And so that's basically what I'm looking at doing. And the third, the third page is basically just maybe a hypothetical drawing. I haven't really, it's gonna cost me about fifteen thousand dollars to get it surveyed and proper surveys, and then, you know, I'm not sure on the engineering, but I kind of wanted some clarification on the rules before I went and spent that money. And basically, I'm, you know, asking for clarification on the grandfather clause, because per y'all's definition, I made the definition of an RV park. I've been existent prior to the rules, so I should be grandfathered in. But it's, is this new tract gonna be grandfathered in? I know the old tract is, but the new tract that I bought prior to the rules as well, is it gonna be grandfathered in? And do I have to basically comply with the hundred-year floodplain? And there's a couple other, you know, things that may just make the project unfeasible depending on what, you know, what's actually required, so. So first, I, you know, I'd ask, can, is this new tract grandfathered in? And if so, that's great. We could stop there.
Wade, I know that y'all discussed this floodplain issue down by sixty-seven.
Yeah, no permanent structures in the hundred-year floodplain.
And somebody like, as long as it was mobile or on skids or something?
Yes.
You have to educate me that it could be pulled out of there? And I know no septic systems in the floodplain, right?
Well, that can be put in there, but they have to be engineered and pass the onsite rules.
Right.
Whatever they are.
Right.
I don't know all the rules I did in the past, but it's been too long ago. I guess the first question is, is it grandfathered in?
Yes.
My opinion is it is not. This is a, this is a second phase to, or whatever it is to what you've already got. I don't know how we grandfather this one into the first one you have.
Brand-new construction?
Right.
But on the, on the hundred-year floodplain, agenda item number four is to update the RV policy. And from my, from my part of it, and my recommendation to the court, I don't know, I'm getting ahead of it a little bit over the last judge, but my recommendation to the court was to amend the floodplain clause.
Oh, really?
Yes, sir. So that court approval may take care of the floodplain issue.
Yep.
May I add something?
Sure, please.
I have spoken with B.R.A. about the floodplain. And they're, what they had informed me about was to, the homeowner had to sign up for an automatic call when they do let the water out.
Okay.
And it's only a fifteen-minute timeframe before the water actually rises.
Yeah, yeah.
I do know that for sure.
Okay. Not much time.
No, it's not.
It takes about an hour to get down from Granbury, maybe, or actually, not an hour, a full day to get the flow from Granbury.
Local runoff will be instant, like she's saying, but it is almost a ten to twelve, if not plus, from our studies of swiftwater rescue before the Granbury water gets here. We'll see local runoff before we see the water from the reservoir.
But also, if you know something's coming, storm, that fills it up, that it's gotta be released, you'd be best to plan ahead of time with whoever's there to go ahead and tell them, prepare to get out of it.
Right, and we're signed up, and I know, you know, I know the amount of water that we're talking about is, would drain Granbury in a day. It's a lot of water. And, you know, from talking to Tom, he said, yeah, we could plenty of, plenty of warning, and we've got all the equipment and staff to help. I think we'll get it done, you know, because everything's mobile. And it, it's, and it's really not rushing water, it's kind of backwater, is what it is. It's not like flowing over there, it's just kind of pooled up. Because it, I mean, it's a good twenty-foot off the river bottom. I mean, I don't have the exact figures, but it's not like it's right there. It's quite, it's quite a ways up. But it is, you know, technically in the floodplain. So with that issue taken care of, you know, the, I guess the other clarifications on the rules that I would ask about are the interior streets. It says county road guidelines, is that a private road guideline? You know, my engineer was like, oh, ninety thousand pounds, as long as it can hold a fire truck, we can stamp that. Or is it, you know, like a county road? Because that's, that's a lot of, you know, that's quite a bit bigger than what I have. You know, we've got about twelve-foot roads right now. And so that would, you know, could, it just would add to my cost to, and I, you know, I think maybe detract from the RV park a little bit with huge roads, you know, on the new addition, but that, so that's, I guess I don't know if anyone's got any guidance on that.
I don't think we're asking you to put in like curbs and pave and all that, but wide enough for the fire in case they needed some of the ambulances, sure, and for the larger RVs to get in and out.
I know when my neighbor was looking at putting, you know, putting, dividing into some lots, you know, you know, cutting his property up, if he was gonna put in a road, he had to do it to a county road spec, you know, grade and all that, so. But, you know, I would ask for the private road, that's just what my engineer said. Oh, no, that's just for a fire truck. Basically, you know, we'll have plenty of access, and we're gonna be, you know, putting RVs through this, so it's gonna be a good road base. It's just, you know, adding to the cost to, you know, get the, get the road to spec, I guess.
Yeah, in my imagination, it wouldn't be up to county road specs unless you intended on donating it to the county to maintain.
Okay.
So therefore, if you're not intending on that, then therefore, it should be a private road.
Okay, great. And then the other one, saw fire protection and prevention and protection, said something about fire hydrants. You know, that's three hundred thousand bucks to put a fire hydrant in. So I don't, you know, I guess that's, looking for clarification on that one as well.
You probably don't have county water out there, do you?
No, I don't.
You probably weren't on well water.
Yeah, just, I have a couple wells and a little booster system down to the RV park, so. You know, I put an underground storage tank and big pumps and all that stuff, so it's... I just wanted to make sure that wasn't gonna be a requirement. But outside of those two things, those are basically the, you know, things that could hold up the project, or the, three things that would hold up the project.
Can we refer the fire hydrant thing to the fire marshal?
I have trouble seeing how we can regulate fire hydrants in places that they can't even be installed in.
True.
You know what I mean? Because for this gentleman, he'd have to put in the pressure tanks and everything to supply a fire hydrant. We don't have anybody else living up to that that's outside the water district area.
Right.
That's way...
How many spaces are there altogether?
I have thirty, and I'm, you know, looking at putting in for phase one, ten more, and then maybe up to thirty on, it's roughly be ten acres. So it'd be maybe sixty total by the time, but I gotta get, you know, we're, we average about five customers a weekend, maybe last year, and maybe we're doing ten. And so I want to build it in phases, because I know we're not gonna fill up. We're just kind of off the beaten path, so it's harder for people to find us, so. So, but it's, it's a very aesthetic, like, I mean, everybody that comes out there is, like, this is one of the coolest places. We don't want to tell anybody about it, because it's so peaceful and quiet down there. The only problems we had, little standoff with the sheriff one time. We had a, we had somebody with...
Great cooperation, but we're open. We had a sand dollar, a lot. We had a hailstorm come through. We've camped out there, Brian and I both, and at about ten to twelve thousand cubic feet a second, did a kayak trip down to Brazos, six, eight miles. Well, in time, it was still another twenty-four hours before it got up in their bottom. They had to start pulling breakers and that kind of stuff, so. Yes, what she's saying is true, they do have that automatic call-out, but it's almost a day before that water's getting to us, whereas pecan, they're gonna see it instantly up there.
And he said he was signed up already.
Yeah, we're signed up on the, for the notification, but it hadn't got over it. I don't think it's ten, because we've seen ten thousand just recently, and that wasn't, that wasn't even close. It was just barely getting to the, to my, where my land kind of stuff.
Maybe, yeah.
I heard forty, but, you know, I hadn't, I hadn't, I hadn't seen it myself yet, so. It's gonna, it's...
Well, we got to pretty much taking care of it as far as the roads and the grandfathering.
Yeah, and we discuss and take action on the next item, what y'all decide you want to do and not do, the fire hydrants, the roadways, and the grandfatherings. That's the three questions, Mr. Bayless?
Yes.
The grandfather, the roadways, and the fire hydrants.
Yes, and the hundred-year floodplain, but if y'all are making that order, then we don't have to talk...
Yeah, I don't know where we're headed with that one. I guess we'll find out here in a minute, yeah. Man, I apologize, Jeff, I'd have put that before this if I had realized.
Yeah, no.
If I'd known it does, we would have put that before.
We were happy, I've been there, so.
So once we get to discuss take action, we'd like, you'd like to have us discuss the grandfather part, the roadway part, and the fire hydrant part, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, do you have anything else at all? And we may have the questions for you when we get to discuss take action.
No, I think, I think I've basically covered everything, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, sir. Let me stay here, or?
No, you better stay here.
Okay. Oh, I mean, right here.
No, no, you sit down. No, you're good. All right, item number three, discuss take action pertaining to presentation by James Bayless, owner of Brazos River Hideout Adventures RV Park. All right, let's address the grandfather. Wade has made, not a motion, but he made mention of that, since it is brand-new construction, that he don't see how it could be grandfathered in, correct?
That's my opinion.
And I agree with that.
Yes.
So what we'll do, if the court's in agreement, we'll make this all in one motion, is how we do it, once we work our way through these three items, so.
And then the roads, we said something about private?
Since it's private roads, it wouldn't be held up to the specs of the actual county roads, is that correct?
Well, the RV policy doesn't say it has to be to the specs, it says to the county road guidelines.
Okay.
So I think that gives us a little leeway there on roads.
Some are private roads are wide enough.
Yeah.
So he doesn't have...
It doesn't say it must meet the specs of the county road. It says the county road guidelines, because it's according to that.
His engineer won't have to worry about the width, the depth, and the weight. All right, and third item is the fire hydrants, which I know we're not holding anybody else accountable. Of course, this is new construction, but he's already got one RV park operating out there without a fire hydrant, so I'm not sure how we could hold this gentleman, if he doesn't have access to county water, to have access to the pressure to run a fire hydrant.
Well, instead of changing the rules, why don't we just do a variance on that? Because there may be some areas that can follow the rules.
True.
And some that can't.
Some of them have, you know, they have county water, and they now have fire hydrants. Others are miles from the county water and won't have them for many years to come, which needs the pressure for the fire hydrant.
Yeah, I just, I'd hate to change that one for this.
Right.
So we could, you know, go with the variance on that as well, that he hasn't, doesn't have the ability to provide that volume of water
No.
for a fire protection system.
But you're just suggesting on the hydrant itself, the variance, not anything else in the fire protection.
Whatever he discussed is what he's asking about.
I'll be in congo.
Mr. Bayless, you've probably heard on the previous discussion, if you don't mind, if you would get that section of the rules and then put, you know, what, as it reads, and the variance as the court, on this particular instance, you're allowed the variance of not having the fire hydrant present. If you don't mind taking that, and then writing up what the variance is gonna be if the court moves forward to that, okay?
Okay, and just give that back to y'all?
Yes.
Yeah, if you'll get it back to Ms. Reynolds, and she can get it filed for the record. All right, Michelle, educate me here. Since the way that it's worded, discuss take action pertaining to presentation, I know you're probably not ready for three independent motions. Would you like to see this put into one motion, or how would you?
I would appreciate that, to the court.
All right.
Well, it involves one thing, so.
All right, well, I'll try to make the motion, and y'all correct me if I get it wrong. And Michelle, slow me down. I'll make a motion that item number one, new construction is not grandfathered in. Item number two, the guidelines of the roadways is considered a private road and not held to the same standard as a county road. Is that good? And then the third issue is the court would allow a variance on the requirement of a fire hydrant due to lack of county water and lack of the pressure to have the fire hydrant.
That's perfect.
And I can't repeat that again, Michelle, sorry. I can't remember what I said.
Judge, I can take it directly from the audio.
So I'll make that motion, consider it to the three items that Mr. Bayless has presented to us today. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Tammy. Do we have any further questions or comments or issues? You bet, Jeff.
What about the flooding issue?
That's coming up here on the next time. I'm not sure where we're heading with that, yeah. But, good question. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor, said motion. That's five, four, zero against. Mr. Bayless, if you don't mind, if you just get that written up, you know, the variance, the original document, and then the variance allowing you not to have because of lack of county water providing the pressure.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, item number four, discussing update RV policy. Jeff, I guess that's you.
That's me, yes, sir.
Fire away.
We had had a statement in the RV park policy that says no recreational parks, RV parks should be located in the hundred-year floodplain. I would like to propose that we amend that. And I haven't worded it exactly, but I'd like to propose that we amend it to reflect that the, that RV parks can exist in the hundred-year floodplain if the unit is mobile, if it's movable. In other words, no permanent structure in an RV park. Because I realize a lot of RV parks are put cabins, tiny homes, whatnot. And even those, I'll have a problem with, that they're on skids and can be moved. I don't want stuff going down the river, you know, because it's, it's in the floodplain.
And a lot of these places might be...
And obviously, in the floodplain, has to meet much more stringent septic requirements and whatnot. And that, that goes without saying, that doesn't change. That's, that is what it is. But if, if the unit is movable, I'm proposing that it's allowed in the hundred-year floodplain. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Brian Allen, you got any input on, because I know you get a lot of calls on floodplain insurance and floodplain designations.
And we're not talking about permanent structures again, we're talking about temporary.
Floodplain stuff, I just want to make sure it doesn't contradict anything in there.
Yeah, the hundred and five hundred thousand. New theme of rules and regulations. And most of that, as we all know, is pertaining to the insurance, because they regulate the insurance industry, and they, you have to get it through them, and they designate floodplains.
You know, a good thing to think about adding in that possibly, Jeff, is the tenants or the owners of the park are part of our code grid and if or IPOS for the notifications. Because sometimes we get the fluxi coming up, and we'll encapsulate that in a geofence map and send that out, saying, you know, for the next four hours, watch your backyards, things are coming up. So that could sure get the group that's out there notified.
And they still got a level of state guidelines, and Rebecca and Kathy's guidelines on the septic, however it is structured in...
That, that's, does not, that can't judge.
Because that's always the biggest issue is the septic. Well, Jeff, you want to figure out how to word that, what you just said?
Well, if you would prefer, Judge, I can get with Trey and talk to him about the, the alert notification, things like that, see if we want to pursue that, and I can bring it back.
Yes.
Would y'all rather me do that? Take any action today, and you get all your wording like you want it, we'll have it on the...
Because I had just intended on changing that one line, but might be a little bit more to it. And then I can also look at the fire hydrants and water, district water, and maybe change that wording a little bit to, if that's good.
Maybe update more than one item at one time?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right.
This, this thing is a working, it's a living, breathing document. It's, you know, it's gonna change and whatnot. We just need to, to make sure we change it to benefit our folks as well as us, as the county, so.
So, Michelle, there might be a special session you're looking for. If you get, if you get that like you want it.
I could have that by next week, whenever you towards the end of the week, if that's good. As soon as I can get with Trey, I can have it done.
And Michelle, if you would just get us a wording on your item, then maybe we can do it like next Thursday or Friday. We just have to see what all is in there.
Sounds perfect.
Okay, so I'm hearing the closing agreement, we're not going to take any action on number four today.
Correct. So that's what I would ask.